Welcome Med Center to our Town Hall meeting and also welcome community members to our Town Hall meeting. As always, I want to start by thanking our amazing staff for everything that they do to help keep each other and our community safe and healthy. Today, we're having a very special event. It's our first virtual community Town Hall meeting. So we want to welcome all of you from outside the Med Center watching us. We are so eager to address your questions and concerns about COVID-19 and the vaccine. This is a live Town Hall, so please feel free to submit any questions you may have in the chat portion of the screen. I want to introduce our experts, our medical experts. We have Dr. Brad Spelberg, who is our Chief Medical Officer here at the Medical Center, and Dr. Paul Holtham, our amazing epidemiologist, infection control expert, to be able to answer any of your questions. I'm very happy to announce that this Saturday, we are holding our very first COVID-19 Community Vaccine Clinic. And this is in partnership with Supervisor Solis's office, the LAC USC Medical Center Foundation, CARES, the Wellness Center, and LA Regional Food Bank. And this is a very unique event. This is a vaccine event that is open to all of our staff, friends, and family members. So if you're a staff member here and you want to bring someone, look for the broadcast on email or ask your supervisor to please print it out. And it's very easy to register and get an access code, so you can do that. Everyone who registers for this event will not only receive the vaccine, but will also receive free resources, including health and wellness information, groceries from the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, goodie bags from our partners, Baby2Baby. And so we want to thank all of our community partners for this, CARES, the Wellness Centers, et cetera. But community members, you all are welcome to come to this vaccine event and receive your vaccine. We will be administering the Pfizer vaccine, the first dose this Saturday, and then the second dose three weeks from that time. And so there is information posted on our chat on how to register. But if you just happen to wake up and say, hey, I want a vaccine, we won't turn you away. So welcome to our clinic. You can also follow us on social media where all of this information is posted, so thank you. And with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Brad Spelberg.
Good morning, everybody, and for those new viewers, welcome. We call Wednesdays "soothe-ness Wednesdays" for soothing thoughts. It's sort of a rip-off of Stephen Colbert's "truthiness." And we've been very soothed for the last couple of months, actually. So every week, we show two graphs to give people a sense of where COVID is throughout the county of Los Angeles and in our hospital. And the top graph, which we're looking at first, is the total number of COVID-positive tests across all of LA County reported by the Department of Public Health. The last point on the graph, which is in a dashed line, is projected through the end of the week based on the numbers from the first several days of the week. And as you can see, we continue to have a decreasing number of new positives. This is now the eighth or ninth straight week where case counts have been flat to declining. And if you go back to the end of January, when the big decline began, we're really in our third month of being off our peak and continued to decline. So that's very reassuring. There's no evidence of a turnaround in case numbers. We're going in the right direction. And if we want to get this to zero, the key is getting all of you vaccinated. We need everyone to be vaccinated. And then COVID will go away, and we can all get back to our lives. And wouldn't that be wonderful? Next graph shows the number of new positive tests in the LAC USC Emergency Department. Now, this graph is slightly different because we've actually had a flat number of cases week after week after week for 11 straight weeks. Now, why would that be? Why would case counts be declining across the county, but in our emergency department, the case numbers are flat? It's increasingly clear that the answer is because we test everyone who's being admitted to our hospital, whether they have symptoms or not. And we do that because of the concern that someone who doesn't have symptoms may still transmit the virus to our staff members and other patients in the hospital. This is a true story because true stories sometimes really highlight, they paint a picture that clarifies things better than words could. Yesterday, we admitted to the hospital a patient who came to us for problems having nothing to do with COVID. But this person tested positive for COVID. This is a patient who was very well-known to our hospital because they had previously tested positive for COVID and had very severe COVID and were in our hospital for several months, starting in November of 2020. This person's test is still positive five and a half months later. And this is the key. Once you have acquired COVID, your test will be positive for many, many months, even though you no longer have COVID. So this flat portion of the curve here, where 11 straight weeks, we've had a flat number of positive tests, is because people still haven't cleared all of the RNA from the virus 11 weeks later. Or if it was at the peak in January, eight, nine weeks later. I would expect, as we head into the summer months, June, July, August, enough time will have passed that all the people that were infected over the winter will no longer test positive. So I think this is still very reassuring to us that we are not seeing significant severe disease from COVID. We still do see occasional true COVID disease. We have 25 patients in the hospital right now that have a positive test for COVID. Of those, two were initially admitted for COVID disease. And of those two, only one currently has symptomatic COVID disease. The other one was admitted in February, and he still hasn't left the hospital. So COVID is still around. It's at a low level. It is not causing severe disease. And if we want to keep that going in the right direction and get rid of COVID, we need everyone to be vaccinated. And with that, Dr. Holtham.
Well, thank you very much. Traditionally, my goal is to quash Dr. Spelberg's "soothe-ness" as an epidemiologist, although I must say, as we look around what's happening, Los Angeles County is going to move presumably to the yellow tier on the state tier system by next week. People now are able to go out and do lots of things. The CDC made announcements yesterday saying that those who are fully vaccinated can safely do things like not wear a mask outdoors. And all of that is wonderful and good. Just as a counterbalance to that, I think we should think of two things. One is COVID is certainly not eradicated in the world. There are places in the world, such as India right now, where there is truly a catastrophe with the number of deaths and the number of cases of COVID. So while we can be happy that here in the United States, for the most part, we're seeing marked declines, it doesn't mean that COVID has gone away everywhere. And that means that indeed, we still need to exercise caution. Now, how much caution? We should be certainly cautious in certain instances where there is a high likelihood of spread of COVID. In the hospital setting, whatever they say from the CDC about what one can do in the community, there are still concerns because we're around a lot of patients who may be ill. And there is concern about staff transmitting disease to our vulnerable patients. So here in the hospital, we will continue to mask and use precautions as we have in the past, at least in the foreseeable future. That being said, I do have to somewhat give in to Dr. Spelberg's "soothe-ness" in that, at least in California in particular, things are looking extraordinarily hopeful. And with the number of people who are being vaccinated, I think there is great hope that we will not plunge back into a huge surge as we did over the holiday season this winter.
Okay, on to our questions. And all these questions have been submitted by all of you out in our community. Are there any pre-existing conditions that might make someone a bad candidate for a vaccine, such as a cancer patient undergoing chemotherapy?
Would you like to start, Doc?
I would start with a long answer, no. You could, but we can say cancer patients undergoing chemotherapy may have somewhat less response to the vaccine, but there is no reason not to give them the vaccine. And understanding what we do right now, it would appear to give them at least some protection, which is better than none.
And I will only add to that. The list of conditions that you might think suggests that we should rethink vaccinating, I will tell you, are the same patients who are going to have a worse outcome if they get COVID. Those are exactly the patients who must get vaccinated. Because if they don't and they get COVID, the outcome is going to be bad. So I agree with Dr. Holtham. There are no conditions that should suggest to you, you shouldn't be vaccinated.
What side effects might I experience from the vaccine? Will I get more side effects with a particular vaccine?
There are common side effects. I'll let you go with rare side effects. But for common side effects from actually all the vaccines, both those released in the United States and those not, people can get pain, swelling, and sometimes redness at the injection site. But that's true for actually all vaccines and many injections people get anyway. For the rest of the body, people can get muscle aches, and that's relatively common. That may last up to 24 hours. A headache, again, many people report that lasts up to 24 hours. Much less commonly, some fevers and chills. Not in evidence of vaccine, but simply in evidence of your immune system responding to the vaccine.
I'm going to ask you, Dr. Holtham, after I comment, to comment on whether you can get COVID from the vaccine. So the other, the big thing that people are concerned about with the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, and we're administering the Pfizer vaccine, is allergic reactions. The incidence of allergic reactions is about 1 in 100,000 people. So it's still extremely uncommon. But if you vaccinate 10 million people, that means even a 1 in 100,000 event is going to occur. Those events are treatable, and there is no prediction to them. So the fact that you have seasonal allergies, or allergies to penicillin, or allergies to other food products or drugs does not predict allergy to this vaccine. So people shouldn't worry too much about that. The big side effect people have been concerned about with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which we will not be administering on Saturday, is, again, very rare, on the order of 1 in 1 million, so even less common than the allergic reactions with the Pfizer vaccine, blood clots, particularly certain types of blood clots that can happen inside the skull. And again, if caught early, those blood clots do tend to be treatable. I will emphasize again, that is a 1 in 1 million event. It's incredibly uncommon. And we are not administering that vaccine on Saturday. We are using the Pfizer vaccine.
And to put the risks, such as 1 in 100,000, into perspective, understand that the risk of a serious or fatal reaction to taking penicillin or injection of penicillin is around 1 in 30,000. So the vaccine is much safer than taking a penicillin antibiotic.
That's a good, good metric. Now, Dr. Holtham, could you comment on the possibility of getting COVID from the COVID vaccine?
As I have said before in our Town Halls, in medicine, it's very, very difficult to say with 100% certainty something will happen. Because always, something rare could happen somewhere, sometimes, somehow. But one of the few things I can say with 100% certainty is that you cannot get COVID from the vaccine. The vaccine does not contain the virus, the material that will make COVID happen in you. The Pfizer and Moderna are fragments of RNA, which is a nucleic acid that allows your body, that allows your body to make a single protein out of all the proteins that make up the virus, so that your immune system can respond to that protein. The Johnson &amp; Johnson is different, but again, it has no living material that can give you COVID. You cannot, from any of the vaccines available in the world, get the disease COVID.
Okay. Do you have interpreters on-site for the vaccine so we can avoid mistrust from the community? Yes, absolutely. We have interpreters on-site to meet any language needs. And also, many of our staff are bilingual, bicultural, so you are welcome to come to our clinic. Do you have to be a legal citizen in order to receive the vaccine? Absolutely not. We accept anyone who comes in and registers for the vaccine. And the registration process does not ask for your legal status, so. Joe Rogan said, if you are 21, young, and healthy, he wouldn't advise you to get the vaccine. Joe Rogan, the vaccine expert. How can we, as healthcare workers, convince the youth it is detrimental to receive the vaccine?
Well, since Dr. Spelberg has a personal relationship with Joe Rogan that he's told me about, perhaps as an unbiased observer, I can better discuss it. It's somewhat of a misquote, and people maybe are misunderstanding what Joe Rogan said. He actually noted that, and let me quote, "Yeah, I think the vaccine, for the most part, it's safe to get vaccinated. I do, I do." That was the quote from this. He also mentioned that his parents had gotten vaccinated. When asked if a young, say, around 20-ish person who is otherwise healthy should get the vaccine, he expressed hesitancy, saying that both of his children had had COVID, but they were somewhat mild cases. So he wasn't sure if there was a lot of risk for young, healthy people. Let me just say that Joe Rogan, I don't believe, has any training in epidemiology or medicine. And so he may have misunderstood or not actually seen data about risk. Because there is certainly risk for young, healthy people. The risk is small, but then the risk of adverse effect from the vaccine is much smaller. The risk, obviously, is that we have young, otherwise healthy people who get COVID and die. That's not common. Some young, healthy people get COVID and have a relatively mild case, but have long-term bad events, whether it's loss of taste and smell, whether it's confusion and lack of memory. So it is not a benign disease even in young people. He also doesn't differentiate the fact that if you're young and healthy, it really depends on the risk in your community as your risk of getting it. And lastly, if you're young, healthy, get it, and don't get terribly sick, but you are a shedder and you go around and shed it to the community, then actually, you're endangering people, elderly, those who are immunocompromised, your parents or grandparents, who you may come into contact with. So really, unfortunately, this is probably a position of selfishness and privilege to say, if I'm young and healthy, I don't need to get vaccinated, even though I might endanger members of the community who are at risk for various reasons.
Well, I will add, as Dr. Holtham alluded to, I do not have a personal relationship with Joe Rogan, but he did interview me on his TV show a number of years ago now. And he was a very down-to-earth, nice man. So I like him as a person, the one time I met him. The point is this. I don't know what Joe Rogan said. Dr. Holtham has clarified that he probably didn't say what's been quoted in the media. Here's the point. The reason that you need to get vaccinated is because we're all in this together. This virus counts on people not being vaccinated in order to continue to exist. If everybody got vaccinated, the virus would stop existing. In order for this virus to continue to exist, it must continually hop from person to person to person. And if it runs out of people to hop into, because everybody it contacts has been vaccinated, it stops existing, and we can all get back to our lives. So the 21-year-old should get vaccinated to protect themselves, but they should also get vaccinated to stop the virus from spreading in the community so we can all get back to our lives. We are truly all in this together. And individuals who choose not to get vaccinated are putting everyone else at risk.
Will the vaccine provide protection against all strains of COVID?
There's been a lot of talk about strains. The talk has gone far beyond what the science tells us, which has been a common theme for COVID, unfortunately. The reality is, we do not have any meaningful scientific studies that tell us that any of the variants that have been described will escape the vaccines in any meaningful way. And most of the news media reports that have described, oh, escape this, escape that, have not actually demonstrated meaningful breakthrough infection rates, irrespective of what strain we're talking about. So to me, this whole thing about strains has been a huge distraction. The bottom line is, everybody needs to get vaccinated. And if we get everybody vaccinated, this disease will go away, like other vaccine-targeted diseases have.
I would agree with everything you said, even if we posit that because of some of the changes in some of the strains, the vaccine potentially will make antibodies that bind a little less well. The answer is, for all the strains we know, the COVID vaccine still appears to provide good protection. It is theoretically possible that some strains may arise where it doesn't provide as good protection, but that really doesn't matter. Very good protection is still better than no protection.
Will the Friends and Family Vaccine Clinic be run as a walk-through? Will it be offered again? We're encouraging everyone to register. So if you're thinking of showing up, please, 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 register. It will make things go by quicker. But if you happen to show up without registering, we will take care of you. So, and will it be offered again? Probably. We will probably schedule additional community vaccines, as long as there's a demand and a need. I'm a young, fit male with no pre-existing conditions and exercise regularly. What's the point of getting the vaccine if you still have a 5% chance of infection? In cases such as the J&amp;J vaccine, I think the vaccine could have been more detrimental to my body than having to fight off the infection. Very common question.
And I think we've chatted about that in our previous chats about things. I think that the answer is, why would I get it if you still have a 5% chance? Because it gives you a 95% chance of not getting it. But moreover, the 5% chance is you as an individual. We know the vaccine is truly 95% effective. If we can get a vast majority of the population vaccinated, then you will go to an almost 0% chance of infection. We mentioned the risks of the vaccines and the risks of getting an infection and the risks of having chronic disease from the infection. So no, I actually think the vaccine is safer than going ahead and getting the disease.
I'll just add two points. Not only is there a 95% reduction in the risk of getting an infection, if you do have a breakthrough infection, that 5% breakthrough rate, the infection is much milder. And perhaps more importantly, you will shed less virus into the community, exposing fewer people to that virus. So you're a young, healthy, fit male who exercises regularly. I'm going to take a chance that perhaps you play team sports in school. Maybe soccer, maybe football, basketball, baseball. Imagine you're on a team where 11 or 10 people are running one play, and you're off running your own play. Is that play going to work? We are in this together as a community and as a society. And if an individual chooses not to get vaccinated, everyone else is being put at risk because of the chance the virus finds that one person and continues to shed and affects other people. All of us need to be rowing the boat in the same direction. We all need to be running the same play at the same time for this to work and for COVID to go away.
Do you think a third shot will be needed in the near future?
Short answer is no. I am not the CEO of Pfizer, my company. I don't have a company that's making billions of dollars per year selling COVID vaccines. And therefore, I have no financial incentive to tell you, I think you're going to need another shot. The fact is, we have no data to suggest, there are no studies to suggest that we will need seasonal shots. No other vaccine is that true for. The influenza virus is not a good example, as we've talked about before. You need seasonal, annual shots of influenza because the virus changes every year. It's not because the vaccine stops working. There's no evidence that COVID is changing enough to require another shot. Vaccine-induced immunity tends to last for many years. So I think it's unlikely in the near future. There may be four, five, six years out, but not in the near future. It's unlikely.
Agree.
Okay. What's your best advice for people who say that the vaccine isn't safe? And I know we talked a little bit about that. And who oversees this emergency use authorization of the vaccine?
Well, the emergency use authorization is overseen by the Food and Drug Administration, the group that approves all drugs that are used in the county. The emergency use authorization is slightly different than a drug approval. It means that they don't feel they have quite enough data to approve it at this moment, but that because of the importance of the drug and the severity of the disease, they will authorize its use. At this point, a lot of data has been accumulating since the EUA, the Emergency Use Authorization, was given. It is inevitable that it will get full approval. It's just really a matter of time to gather all the data and submit it to the FDA.
You know, there's people that say, I'm going to wait to get the vaccine. I want to see how it plays out. I want to see if there's more data coming out. How long should they wait? Aren't clinical trials sufficient data?
The answer to the second is, yes, I believe the clinical trials are sufficient data. How long should we wait, Dr. Spelberg?
We should wait in a time machine going back nine months. That's how long we should wait. There's no more waiting. We need to get vaccinated. We all want to get back to our lives. I'm so sick of talking about COVID. Aren't you sick of hearing about COVID? Aren't you sick of seeing news stories about COVID? If we want COVID to go away, everybody needs to get vaccinated.
My friends think immunity only lasts six months after receiving the vaccine. What's your opinion about this?
Well, your friends probably looked at some press releases and somewhat misinterpreted the information that's come out. That is, a study came out that showed at six months, people had adequate antibody levels. And most people believe the antibody level is some kind of marker for how much immunity you have to the disease, although we could question how good that is. But it didn't say it only lasts six months. It said it lasts at least six months. It said it lasts at least six months, and we don't have data for beyond that.
There are no vaccines in the history of human beings that stop having immunity at six months. I, I have told this story before, but we have some new viewers. There was a fascinating study published about 10 years ago in a leading scientific journal called Nature, where they found people who were in their 90s or 100s and had survived the 1918 flu pandemic. They were small children at the time, and they drew their blood. And they found every single one of those individuals still, still had immunity to the strain of influenza that was circulating in 1918. 90 years later, they still had immunity. Our immune systems will maintain memory for decades. Typical vaccines will maintain immunity for years to decades. You might need a booster at 10 years. You might need a booster once as an adult, but typically not six months, 12 months, two years.
Why are people still dying after receiving the vaccine?
I don't exactly know what this question means.
Right. You could read it two ways. Are they questioning, why do people get COVID, and a few people have even gotten severe COVID and died after getting the vaccine? Or you could read it, why do people die because of the vaccine? Both, by the way, are extraordinarily rare circumstances, but maybe you want to speak to them.
Well, I would just start by saying, remember, we have 25 people in the hospital now that have tested positive for COVID. Two of them were admitted to the hospital because of COVID, and only one of them currently has symptomatic COVID. So the fact that someone dies having tested COVID positive does not mean they died because of COVID. People are going to die after vaccination. Vaccination doesn't stop death. They're going to get hit by buses and fall off ladders and have heart attacks, like everyone would do if there wasn't COVID. So I, I would be careful interpreting deaths after vaccine as being related to COVID. We know the vaccines dramatically reduce the risk. It's not to zero, but 95% reductions in COVID infections, and that when those infections occur, they are much milder. That's the bottom line.
Okay, we're getting lots of questions on the chat. We're going to try to get through all these questions, so we're going to, our answers will be brief as we get through all of these. How do you feel about Joe Biden's new outdoor mask guidance and touting stunning progress? How do we know if people are, who are not wearing masks are vaccinated?
Well, I, I can tell you, the, it's not Joe Biden. He just endorsed the CDC's recommendations. And I must say, here, here are the current CDC recommendations, which are, as many of them have been recently, extraordinarily confusing documents that have a lot of information that people could not possibly remember, but I think there, there are two things that can be said. If you are fully vaccinated, then you are pretty safe doing a lot of things, although in many high-risk situations, even with vaccine, you should probably wear a mask. If you're not fully vaccinated, you should just wear a mask. Maybe if you're outside hiking in Yosemite, 100 miles from where anyone else is hiking in the back country, you could take off your mask. Otherwise, you wear a mask unless you're vaccinated.
So as employees, if we are working outside, can we stop wearing masks here in the hospital?
No. Unfortunately, we're not under Joe Biden's guidance, because we're under the state's guidance, and the state regulations have stated that while you're on the hospital grounds, you are required to wear a mask. Whether that's rational or not is not the point. The point is, the state has said it, and we have to follow even irrational thoughts by the state.
But there will be, there will be changes to mask rules, particularly as vaccination rates continue to rise and case rates fall. So just keep your eyes up, you know, peeled for new guidance.
Yeah, there was a question about J&amp;J vaccine. Are we going to start using it again?
It, it will be coming back. It will be coming back all through the United States, because the assessment is essentially that while there are risks, the risks of the vaccine are much lower than the risks of the virus.
And the great benefit to it is, it is one-shot. So for certain groups of people who are unable to get two shots, it is really much safer to get the J&amp;J vaccine.
Yep.
Can we start having potlucks now?
The DHS, Department of Health Services, has actually already engaged a process to revisit when we can expand meeting sizes. I am hopeful within the next two to three weeks, we will have that new guidance from DHS. So that question is being actively asked.
According to the guidance from the CDC, if you are vaccinated, you can actually gather in small groups and eat. If you're not, you have to wear your mask, so it's harder to eat.
Okay. Do we get a confirmation of an appointment when we sign up for this Saturday's Community Clinic? Yes, you, you do get a confirmation once you register for this. How does the vaccine affect fertility?
There is no evidence the vaccine affects fertility. This has been a news media trope that just keeps getting repeated for reasons I cannot fathom. There is not a single shred of evidence that the vaccine affects fertility, and I will point out, there is no evidence that any other vaccine that's ever been put on the market affects fertility. So that needs to just go away.
And that is true for men as well as women.
Correct.
If I am in my first trimester of pregnancy, should I still get the vaccine?
The, the current evidence is that the vaccine is very safe in pregnancy. There is no evidence yet, and multiple, many, many, many pregnant women have been vaccinated. So the current thinking is that pregnant women should get vaccinated, because there is no evidence of risk. We certainly do know that pregnant women who get COVID are putting both themselves and their baby at risk. So the vaccine is almost certainly safer than COVID in the setting of pregnancy.
When will kids under 16 be getting the vaccine?
Very soon, I hope.
We hope very soon, down to the age of 12, and probably a few more months to younger children.
And by very soon, we mean the data, a study has already been done in children 12 and 16, and the data is that the FDA, we're simply waiting for the FDA to take action to allow it.
Yeah. Our last question, I don't want to be a guinea pig. When will more data come out? When will they know the true effects of this vaccine?
All right, so you're not a guinea pig. We're not guinea pigs either. I got vaccinated the instant the vaccine was available, because the vaccines have been studied in more than 100,000 people in the gold standard type of trial, a randomized controlled trial. Multiple trials, multiple vaccines. We do know the true effects of these vaccines. So we don't need any more data. This is not an experiment. These are not experimental products. These things are known to be safe and effective, and everybody needs to get vaccinated now. Not, I, if this was an experiment, we would tell you. It's not. We know the thing is safe and effective.
And given the number of people around the world who have been vaccinated, I think that really, we know the true effects. If there's a new adverse effect that comes up, it would have to be exceedingly rare, given the number of people that have already been vaccinated and the fact we haven't noticed it yet.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you all for tuning in. We hope we were able to answer your questions, and I hope to see you all on Saturday at our Vaccine Clinic. Now, we want to share a video that explains our groundbreaking Restorative Care Village at LAC USC. This is really a, a project that represents the future of our campus and how we deliver care here. So enjoy.
This is going to be our Restorative Care Village. There's going to be 160 units of recuperative beds, beds that will help assist in people getting well from mental health illness.
The idea is to set up an array of resources to provide care to our most vulnerable residents. Care for mental health, care for addictions. We want to address homelessness. We want to provide opportunities to people that don't have adequate opportunities. And eventually, we'll have a full continuum of care for people who haven't had it, and because of it, unfortunately, end up in the streets, in the jails, and living unfulfilled lives.
It's a first of many projects around the county's hospital system, with some really exciting new development, new type of treatment for the county Los Angeles residents. We've been really pushed to be innovative about what we're doing, so we're using some different kind of construction, modular and steel construction, which allows us to have a really aggressive construction schedule. It's also a cost-effective way to put up housing really quickly.
This whole idea stems from community involvement and engagement. What typically happens when people come out of our care is they go right back to the streets. Here, we're saying they're going to have respite, they're going to be able to get therapy, case management, and all the services that they need. Care first, jail last, always with the component of making sure that we put housing first as well, so people can get well here, and then go on about their lives.